Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coleman.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Bowers?
Here.
Commissioner Kater? Commissioner Lomis?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Thank you. On March 4th, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency, this is actually March 4th, 2019, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders related to social distancing, shelter-at-home practices, and included the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. In addition to the recent surge of COVID-19 and based on guidance from the California Governor's Office, the Department of Public Health, as well as the county health officer, the City of Bakersfield has limited this meeting to the general public. As such, only those interested in making a comment during Consent Calendar public hearings and public hearings will be allowed to do so. The public may stream a live view of this meeting by going to the website listed on the agenda or by watching it on your local government channel. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item, please.
Item number three, public statements.
Thank you. As stated previously, the recent COVID-19 surge and the governor's executive orders have waived certain provisions of the Brown Act requiring physical presence. Public comments have been encouraged to be made by email and phone calls to the Development Services Department, Planning Division. Those received in such manner have been provided to the commissioners and will be made part of the official record of tonight's meetings. As such, there will not be any in-person public statements tonight. I think that's what we're doing here?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's just the public statement portion, that first portion of the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yes, Your Honor.
We're not going to have an in-person public statement tonight. There will be time to talk about any issues that are on the public hearing portion of the agenda though, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Chair Coleman, just to clarify, Commissioner Kater is now here.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on that, but thank you for adding that. So, Madam Clerk, please update the record that Commissioner Kater has arrived. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number four, consent items.
Thank you. All matters listed under the consent calendar do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless a staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for a separate action. May I have a motion approving the consent calendar non-public hearing items?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Wade? May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Commissioner Rudnick? Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Madam Clerk, are you going to confirm the vote?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number six, non-consent public hearings. I think we skipped, we skipped item five. Item five, consent public hearings.
Thank you. Now is the time for consent calendar public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commissioner, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent calendar public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent calendar public hearing item? Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent calendar public hearing item? Okay, seeing none, at this time, the consent calendar and public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
Sorry, who's that? Commissioner Kater? Commissioner Kater?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Bowers? Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number six, non-consent public hearings.
Thank you. Now is the time for public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Thank you, Chair Coleman. Commissioners, members of the audience, thank you for attending tonight. This item is an extension of time request for a conditional use permit that was approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment in January of 2019. The project's site is located on 18th Street between C Street and D Street. The property is zoned CO, which is designated for professional and administrative office, and within this zone, at the time of approval, florist shops and banquet venues each required a conditional use permit. So again, the Board of Zoning Adjustment considered this request on January 8th, 2019, and what they considered was a florist shop, a floral workshop, and an indoor banquet event, and this was to be held in a 1,630 square foot structure. The florist shop was open Tuesday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and it was open to the general public. The floral shop had bimonthly events, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, with a maximum of 36 guests, and the indoor banquet venue was Monday through Thursday, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, with a maximum of 46 guests. Also part of the conditional use permit was an outdoor banquet event, and these were to be held on Friday through Sunday, noon to 10:00 PM were the hours, with a maximum of 225 guests. Within the conditional use permit, as with all conditional use permits, all construction shall be completed on the premise prior to what the use can be commenced. If that use cannot be commenced within two years, or if the construction is not complete in two years, they can ask for an extension of time up to one year, which comes back to, in this case, it'll come back to the Planning Commission. There are two findings to be made for a conditional use permit, and again, the Board of Zoning Adjustment made these two years ago. The first is that the use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and the second, that the use is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan. In doing so, the conditional use permits are subject to conditions to ensure compliance with the zoning regulations and elements and objectives of the general plan, compliance with the policies of the city, and conditions to protect the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare. So, several options for your commission tonight. First, you could deny the extension of request, in which case the conditional use permit would now become null and void. You can approve the extension of time as requested, and it was requested for one year, so you can approve up to one year. I would note there was a memorandum provided to your commission where the applicant indicates they may not need a full year, so yes, you can approve an extension of time for a lesser amount, and that was identified on page one of the memo, and again, within the comment letters on comment number three. You could approve the extension of time with modified conditions, or if there is insufficient information or unanswered questions tonight where you need to make an informed decision, you can continue this to a date certain. That completes staff's presentation, available if there's any comments or questions.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Commissioner Bell?
Sorry, I'm so sorry, my little request is off. I need to recuse myself on this item. I just wanted to make staff aware I may have a conflict of interest.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, you make the note, please? The public hearing on this item is open. Is there any, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hello, my name is Shannon Huff, and I am the owner of the Bel Ray, the venue and the florist in question for the extension of time. I am just here, really, to just request an extension to finish the very last item on the list. It's our last item on the to-do list of the list of compliances that we needed to do. Everything on the CUP planning side of the list of items that we needed to do has been completed. We were issued our building permit in September, and I really just needed a little time after I got that permit to figure out who my contractor was going to be, how much this was going to cost us, figure out our financing, and all of that has been done. I have submitted to the planning department all of those documents, including our contractor contract, and we're ready to go. This has been a really, really, really long time coming, a lot longer than it probably should have, for sure. It's been a learning process, and I have learned a lot. Main thing is, is to go to the building department first, before you do anything. And so, we've done that. We've done everything we need to do, and we're just really ready to just finish our bathroom. I know that the extension of, the application allows up to one year. We don't need that. I'm not asking for that. We are ready to start immediately. We've already obtained our financing, and we're ready to go. So, they're just waiting for us to say, "Start." Our contractor has said that it should be 90 days weather permitting, which I think will be fine, and hopefully, my goal is prior to 90 days. But we're ready to get started, and we just want to complete that last thing so we can move forward. And today, I'm just really hoping that you will consider that, and I think that's it. Any questions for me?
I'm just sorry, just stay here in the audience, and if the commissioners have any questions, we'll ask that when the commission talks, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this project? Please come to the microphone and state your name and proceed.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Bridget Bonet, and I have the chiropractic practice at 2109 19th Street and am also the owner of 2105 19th Street as well. And our alleys, we share a common alley with the Bel Ray, and I am aware of the party venue and the music and that sort of thing, and I support businesses in Bakersfield especially. And, you know, with everything that's happened this last year, I would really like to see this project move forward, and as long as they are respectful of, you know, closing down the party at the time that the city says that it should be done, I'm okay with that. So, I think that they have a lovely venue, they've really done a lot to improve 18th Street there, and I just, I support the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could you please say and spell your name? I don't think the clerk got your name.
Okay, it's Bridget, B-R-I-G-E-T-T-E, B like boy, O-N-N-E-T.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this project? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and proceed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself and proceed.
My name's John Decker. We're trying to restore the building at 2128 18th Street, it's right on the corner of 18th and C. We've had a problem with this for some time. This whole thing started, as she stated, over three years ago. It got really, really bad, so I went, I was down working on a permit for my building, and I went across to the other folks on the other side, and I asked them at Planning where I would make a complaint. And so, they looked up the address, and they said, "Well, you can't make a complaint because they don't have a permit." So then, I went over to code compliance and talked to them, and they said that I had to document the different shows when they had them, and that they would come out. Well, they couldn't come out because it was on the weekend, and they didn't work on weekends. But anyway, I started documenting them. The first one was October 5th, 2018. This went on for some time, and then eventually, the code compliance people were allowed to go out on the weekends, so I think you have, you have all this information, the planning meeting notes, my letter to you, a lot here. They were told on, here we go, John. They were told on, on May 23rd, this is after we went to the, to the Planning Commission thing that they had here, and they were given a conditional use permit on January 8th of 2019, I think. Yeah, 2019. And on March, or May of 20, 23rd of 2019, they were told that, because they were continuing to have their shows after being told that they couldn't, they were told that they couldn't have them, and that they had certain things they had to do. So then, on February 15th of 20, 13th of 2020, again, they were told that they couldn't do this, and that if they continued to do it, that they would possibly lose their permit. Then, again, on, here we go again, March 18th of 2020, again, they were told that, being as they're continuing to have these things, and they've been told twice already that they couldn't have them, that there might be the possibility that they would lose their, their permit to be open. So, these have continued up until, they had a small one, it was only about 25 or 30 people inside right around Christmas. So, they never stopped. This just continued on and on and on. I submitted all kinds of notes and pictures and such, as far as social distancing or any of that during this pandemic thing, there's none of that. Nobody there wears a mask, there's no separation of people, nothing. They're all, and they get really, really lousy drunk, and they scream, and they yell, and they carry on. As far as I know, they have no permits from ABC to be selling or giving away alcohol, whichever is, which I'm, if I remember correctly, they have to have. They've got no permits to operate. They were told to do all these things, they've done nothing. Well, they did fix the curb out front. There's, they're supposed to put in an area for the garbage cans, because they have no garbage removal. They were doing it for the longest time on the residential permit that was there, but I turned them in, so they took the cans away, but in the interim, they just haul it off to the dump. The sewer that they're going to have to put in has to break up the sidewalk, has to break up the asphalt in the alley, they've done nothing towards that. They have to put in the sprinkler system, they've done nothing towards that. They have to put up a 10-foot firewall, they've done nothing towards that. They've done nothing other than a little bit of work on the concrete out front, and then they, then on, was it September of this year, September 9th, if I remember, they got a, they got a permit. Well, then, it was till December 23rd that they decided they had to get financing. Well, they had told the planning committee that these continuous events that they're putting on, that they're saving the money to do the work. Well, if they were saving the money to do the work, what happened to that money, and why didn't they do any work, other than put in a nice little walkway for their guests to come in, and an area in the back for them to have their barbecue area and all? Now, also, in all your things, it doesn't list the parking lot as part of their venue. The parking lot is part of their venue, that's where people park, that's where they have their food source. When they bring in the catering truck, it parks in the parking lot, the parking lot's right next to me, so by showing that the parking lot is other than theirs, then they don't have to admit that I'm next to them, so no one ever talked to me, and no one ever said a thing to me. I have continually fought this thing for over and over and over and over, continually turned stuff in. If you look, if you, I'm sure you have, look and see all the times that they've had these things, when they were told numerous times that they couldn't have them, Mr. Johnson himself told them that if they continued to have them, he was going to take away their permit, nothing's happened. They just continue to have their little shows, noises. They said that the noise had to stop by 10 o'clock. The noise doesn't stop until midnight. The last time they had one, they had people screaming and yelling, I left at 12:30, screaming and yelling out there, and all drunk and falling down, guys peeing on the fence, this kind of thing. I have to usually stay until the end, because we've had problems with people climbing over the fence, because everybody thinks that our house is haunted, so they want to come in and they want to see the ghosts. I've had my windows broken, my doors kicked in. Originally, when we first started this project, we, I went in and I fixed the kitchen, put in all new appliances, we were starting to move our furniture in, and code compliance came from another area, it wasn't the code compliance officer from there, it was somebody from way down in East Bakersfield, and they put a earthquake condemned notice on my front door. So, then I was told several times, now, I'm working 10 hours a day in the oil fields, I was told several times that I couldn't work at night, that if they caught me in there working at night, that they put me in jail, all right? These folks, this is just on and on and on and on and on. The very first time we ran into them, they told us that they were, you know, privileged and all that kind of thing. Then, another time, she came down and told me that I should just stop bothering them because now they have a lawyer. It's just, it just never stops. The noise doesn't stop, they got one guy, one of their DJs, that he's been there about four or five times, that after the folks are married and it's down towards the end, he uses the F-word several times, blah, 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 blah. In other words, they said, you know, procreate. Well, yeah, that's fine, but don't be screaming that over the loudspeaker. All this stuff comes right into our building. The last time they had it, it rattled the windows on both sides of the house, okay? So, there's no compliance, there's no, we can, we can do whatever we damn well please, is the way they seem to look at it. They have, it's just right in your face. I had them call the police on me. One, one time, they kept, one of the people that worked there drove around the block several times, about an hour or so, and would park out front of my building with the lights on and the car and the engine running. Usually, that means somebody's waiting for me to leave so they can try and break in to see the ghosts. So, I let that go on for about an hour, and then I pulled up behind them, and then they sped off, which they did most of the time. So, they sped off, and they went to the police department. So, I followed them over to the police department. Well, they called the police department, must have said I was, I don't know, going to hurt them or something, because immediately, I had four police cars behind me. So, I explained to them what was going on, and they let them drive away, and then they gave me my license back. So then, a little bit after that, just before one of their, their last screaming parties, they called the police on me when I was in my backyard raking up leaves. They said, the policeman told me, that he was told that four people had just pulled up in a white van, I have a white van, and jumped out and jumped over the fence. So, he's got his hand on his gun, he's worried about, you know, this, this, this whole, and it's just a big Karen thing for whatever, you know, it's looking to get me hurt. So, I explained to him what was going on, and he apologized, and he said, you know, this is really a waste of my time. Then that night, they had their big party, and I called the police, because I was upset by that time, I called the police. The police came out, and it was just, like I said, the windows, all the windows were rattling, all right? So, the police came out, and then they went into the house, his house or their house, and then they came back out, and they got in their car, and I said, "Wait a minute, the noise still going on." So, I went down and talked to them. The police explained to me that they saw their conditional use permit, and so that they were allowed to have amplified music. So, it just continued until, oh, I guess, about 12:30. The police were lied to, again. Their conditional use permit says that they have to do this, 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 and this before they can have any of these parties. They've done almost nothing, nothing. There's no fire sprinkler set, there's no, like I said, no, no wall, no bathrooms, no sewers, no place for the garbage, they don't have garbage pickup. It's just like, I don't understand. Repeatedly, they were told by, by Mr. Johnson and his staff that they were going to lose their license if they continued to have these, these parties, and they just continued, they didn't care. So, that's where I'm at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions of the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, it is only the
Chair Coleman?
Yes.
I'm not sure if anyone else would like to speak in opposition?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead, I apologize. So, if anybody else would like to speak in opposition to the project, please come forward and state your name and begin, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I was just waiting to see what you would do.
You never know.
My name's Sharon Decker, I'm John's wife.
Thank you.
I am also owner of the house at 2128, which we were hoping to make into our home. This venue, if, if they would just be polite, if they would just be courteous, if they wouldn't direct their loud music directly at our house, if they didn't direct their blinking lights, their disco lights directly at us, if they didn't have, tell all of their customers how bad we were so they'd throw beer bottles into our yard as they were going by, or try to jump over, perhaps we could work it out. But in all of these three years, I haven't seen any courtesy, they've treated John badly, we've had death threats. we've had death threats, and I'm not very happy with the whole situation. And I want to point out that their conditional use permit was up on January 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to this project? If so, please come forward and state your name and proceed. Does any commissioner have any questions of the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, it's only the time to ask questions. This is the time for move on to, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kader.
I just had a quick question for the neighbor that spoke in support, if I could ask. Mrs. Bonnet, was that, yes. Do you mind clarifying the two properties that you own? Is one of residents?
Yes.
And is that, yeah, okay. And is that where you currently reside?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clearing.
Would any other commissioners like to ask questions of the public? Seeing none, this will be the time for rebuttal. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will only have five minutes, so make comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of previous speakers to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so. This is rebuttal four, yes? Yes?
Yes.
Five minutes on the clock, please, thank you.
Okay. I would just like to make it clear, and I think it's really, really important, because I'm not, I don't want to waste my time going back and forth with Mr. Decker. He has, I'm sure, supplied you with absolutely everything that you need to know, and it's very disturbing. And I can tell you, he does not understand in the capacity of which I've dealt with the planning department. So, so many of the things that he is saying that I haven't complied to, I have. I would like to make a statement that I feel is very, very important, that the Deckers do not live at this residence. They've owned this property for many, many, many years and they do not live there. They've never lived there as far as I understand, and as far as I know, the property isn't even deemed livable. I do not understand and I cannot comprehend how I affect them directly, how music is bothering them, lights are bothering them when they do not reside at this property. They've never resided there. The only time that they come to the property, and they've proven that because they've admitted it in all the documentation that they've provided, the only time that they come is on the weekends to see if maybe I'm doing something so they can take pictures and provide it to the planning department. I mean, I don't have to try to convince you of all of this information because you already have it. So I'm just not even going to go into any of that. I have never, though I want for the record, have ever been rude, said or have done anything directly negative toward my neighbors. I have letters of support from neighbors surrounding me that actually live there and do business there, and they have written in support of our business. So I think I'll just leave it at that and hope that you will consider all of the information, including their own, including theirs, they've provided a lot for you. As far as trash and bottles and things like that, I would think there would be pictures of all of the things they're claiming that I've done, even the bad things. They have pictures of everything else, so I'm assuming that they would have pictures of those things as well. There's not any. So I'm just going to leave it at that and hope that you will take everything into consideration and so we can just move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We still have a couple of minutes left. If anybody would like to rebut in favor, please come to the microphone, state your name and proceed. Okay, can we move to the rebuttals against? Again, you'll have five minutes total time for rebuttal against. If you'd like to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and proceed.
My name is John Decker. We own that building on the corner, 2158. As I said, we tried to move in and then the city gave us a earthquake condemnation. So we straightened that out, we had to put in 15 yards of concrete under the back and jack up the side of the house, which is brick. I've never jacked up brick before, so I didn't know how to do it, so I had to find somebody to do it. They finally found somebody down in San Luis Obispo and they came out once they had time and they dealt with it. So we jacked that up. Then we had to do the inside. The foundation was in very poor shape, so we had to redo that, we had to flatten out the floors. Found out the floors are full of termites, so we had to remove all the floors and put down all new floors so that we didn't have a termite problem. The plumbing people had put concrete in it because it had been foreclosed on, not from the people we bought it from, but from the people for them. Then I found places underneath where the cast iron pipe had vents cut in it so that all the water fell into the ground. All new wiring, all new plumbing, put in a half bathroom, straightened out the walls, insulated, put a new roof on it, put a handicap access on the side because I'm looking to the future when I may have to come up a little slower. It's just been one thing after the other, continues. We have put 200, no, 200, $250,000 in work and we paid $400,000 for it. So altogether, we got $650,000 involved in the building. And yes, we haven't been able to move in yet, but we just sold two of our buildings down on the other end of East 18th Street, so now we have the funding to do it, I have a few small things to do. As far as not showing up, we have been there over and over. I've worked on that building, I gutted the building so that we could do all this other, straightened everything out, got everything proper. The old tonneau framing where they put down the tuba force flat, I took that out, I put in, I think I got $80,000 plus all my work in framing inside there. It's just been on and on and on. The money pit that you talk about, it really is. But when we're done, it'll be really nice. I spent 30 years in San Francisco as a building contractor, worked specifically on Victorians. I've done everything on Victorians, foundations, inside, basades, pretty roofs, all that kind of thing. And now I'm kind of old, so I don't really, I can't climb a scaffolding that well anymore. Have my own scaffolding, have all my own tools. It's, I have a building in San Francisco that people drive by, stop, back up, get out, take pictures because all the money that I made, I put into my building except for the little bit that we used and we bought Joe's National down there where I have all my stuff stored. I've had a lot of problem with COPD from all my years. I've spent four times in the hospital with it here in the past year and a half. It's something I never expected. I always, never wore a mask, stupid. So, you know, it's just on and on and on. So now, I came back to Bakersfield because my parents were dying, so I came back to help them out and we needed a place, so we bought Joe's National down the other end of East 18th. And then I went out and dealt with all their problems, took over the oil leases, that's where I spent my 10 hours a day, got those all up and running, got everything all good again. My brothers wouldn't help with anything, so I sold it. Everybody got their own money, no question. We worked on the buildings next door to us and we sold them at a loss because this is a bad time, but we need the money. So we have the money now, like I said, to complete the project or at least the sheetrock and the framing, not the framing, but the trim on the inside that I'm not able to do. I've got a little bit of brickwork to do, but that's it. So I'm close. It's not like I've been sitting on my hands, as the lady says, all the time working except for when I can't breathe, and that's become a real, real problem. But we have all the parts. I have a 3,000-square-foot basement that's full of architectural antiques from working in the city. I would come into your place, I'd give you new doors, Victorian doors, they were old doors, but new to your building, the hardware, the windows. I wanted to open a plexiglass place, but, you know, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do that. We also tried to open up a venue for...
You have 30 seconds left. Today, we have 30 seconds left.
Too much about me, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. There is still 20 seconds on the clock, if somebody would like to speak rebutting, go ahead.
You know, I don't know, John goes there every night and he goes there during the day...
Your time's up, but I'll give you 10 more seconds because we cheated you out of a little bit.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
I don't know what she's done, but if she would just not direct the noise toward us and the lights toward us, that would be really, really nice. I don't think she's complied to all of the things that the conditional use permit requested. However, she must have because that's what she said, but I haven't seen the work done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will now close the public hearing on, public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action. Would any commissioners like to comment? Commissioner Bauer.
Question for Mr. Decker. Just to clarify, you are not currently living there right now, correct?
No, sir, I got to get sheetrock up first.
Okay. And in the last three years, have you lived there at all?
We did, the last three years, we did framing.
Come on.
And I couldn't have it done...
Mr. Decker, do you want to go up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
I couldn't have it done all at once because the fellows that we got to do it only could work on it part-time, they had other jobs. So they would come in and they'd take care of the framing to a point, and then I would do some as well. But it's, like she said, it's been on a long time, there's no question about that. It's just this tremendous amount that had to be done. It's a 4,000-square-foot building, so it's just on and on and on and on, two stories. And, you know, the flooring alone, it took forever. You have to tear it out and you have to put it back in again, sheetrock has to come out and then I'm going to put it, well, the lath and plaster has to come out and you have to put it, it's a long process. I admit, it's taken too long, but I got the money now. So I didn't want to sell my buildings, but I sold them just so I could get done.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You answered my question, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wade.
Okay, just want to clarify a couple of things. First, Director Johnson, I want to put you on the witness stand here. It was mentioned that you had several conversations in regards to the applicant's compliance with their permit. So that was mentioned a lot. Can you just tell us, was there in fact a lot of violations of this, of the permit in the previous years?
The conditions are specific that you shall not operate until the conditions are coming to compliance. They were operating without complying with all the conditions, therefore, we met with the applicant at least three times to go over the conditions and discuss what needed to be done in order to come into compliance. And she was advised at that time not to operate.
Were there any moments where there was a willful neglect of the rules and just operating anyway, or was it just a matter of circumstances that are understandable?
I would say, and again, the city attorney sitting next to me was in those meetings, that I believe staff was fairly clear that there should be no operations until the conditions come into compliance.
Okay.
I would say before we met the first time to remind her, that would not have been willful negligence because there could have been some clarity that needed to be provided.
I have a question for the applicant. Ma'am, if you wouldn't mind coming down to the microphone?
I'll just to remind you to please remember to limit your response to the question that's asked, please.
It seems as though you operated outside of the permission with, that was granted to you from the permit in the sense you didn't meet the conditions. Is there something, is there a piece of the puzzle that I'm missing?
It's a lot, there's a lot of pieces, and I really tried to narrow it down in the timeline that I submitted to for the meeting. It's very specific in the timeline. When we first started business, we did not know that there, we needed to have a CUP, okay? We were in business for about a year and a half. With the kind of business that we are in, it's booking events that are really far out, sometimes two years out. So about a year and a half into our business is when all of this came to fruition, okay? Then when we got our CUP, our first CUP, we were given conditions that then we needed to comply to, and the list was very long, okay, and very costly. And at the same time, well, let me back up, because at that point in time, we understood the CUP to mean that we had two years to comply, okay? So we commenced, we started working toward our compliances, and then I believe it was in May, we met with the planning department. Met with the planning department, we were going down their list, the city attorney was not in that meeting, she was in one meeting at the very last meeting in March. So we met with them and we started going over all of the compliances that needed to be done. They did tell us, you know, you needed to comply, you have to comply before you commence, and yes, they did say that. We did also say in that meeting, and it's noted, that we had some events that we, we had one the following weekend, it was a wedding. I mean, so we were in a position where we couldn't just cancel somebody's wedding a weekend before their wedding. That is the scenario that we were in because we had events booked, events paid for. You know, here we are having to pay for all these compliances, but we're supposed to cancel all of our events and what are we supposed to do? We were trying to maneuver and do what we could. If you look in the report, you'll see how many events we actually had between that time period and the following year. And it was, it wasn't many. And you can see in the report, I have that, that will show you how many we had, how many were canceled, how many we turned away. So we were trying our very best to work through getting the compliances done. We were not trying to just do whatever we wanted to do and break the rules and not meet compliances because we have met all of those compliances. All of the compliances have been met and yes, like I said in the very beginning, it has been a long row to hoe and we have, it has, we did, we did not go through the proper protocol. We should have went to the planning department and got the CUP first, but we didn't know that we were supposed to do that. So then we were kind of working backwards with all of that. So then, you know, the first of the year comes. We have two events, they're in February and in March, okay? On March 17th, prior to that, March 17th meeting, we had two events. I met with Paul, city attorney, several of the other staff members there as well. But to back up for one second, in the first meeting, the very first one, the bathroom was still kind of in question. That one was still in the air, that one was something that we were still working on. So that bathroom kind of got put down on the bottom of the list because it was so costly and so massive and a monstrosity of a bathroom. It's a six-stall bathroom that we have to build, not just some little bathroom. It's a $128,000 bathroom that we have to build. So that was something we were working on because if you look at the CUP, the information in the CUP information, it says portable previes will not be allowed unless it's approved by the health department and the planning department. So to us, that meant we still had some room. Maybe we, maybe we could figure something out where we don't have to build this big bathroom. So we contacted the health department, the health department, we explained our situation, we explained our business and we said, you know, we don't have food. We have events, portable bathrooms... We have events, portable bathrooms come in, they go out. They come in for each event, they go out. They said, absolutely, that, that's, you, you, we don't have to permit you for that. As long as you don't have food and you're not serving food, you don't have to have the bathroom. So, they wrote a letter to the planning department saying, we, um, aren't, it's not our jurisdiction to, uh, en- enforce a bathroom. So, we thought, great, okay. Now, the planning department, may, maybe they'll now approve it and we can work out something on the bathroom. So, but all along, I'm working on the other compliances, okay? So, March comes around, and, um, I have the two events, February and March fourteenth, okay? We met March seventeenth. We had to determine what we were going to do. Are we going to be able to, what kind of bathroom do we have to build? It was determined, a six-stall bathroom that day.
Sorry to interrupt you. I get the gist of it. Thank you. You answered my question. Uh, I got all the information I, I needed from the...
Okay.
Thank you for, for all of that.
Okay.
I have one last question, uh, Chair. Dr. Bonet, could I ask you a question?
Me? Or you're done with me?
Yeah, yes, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So, we've been talking a bunch about, um, uh, whether this business, essentially whether they've been, uh, good neighbors or not. And there's all this talk about whether, um, the people in opposition here reside there and they don't currently, they plan to. You actually do reside there.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, of the things you've heard described in regards to the, them going beyond ten o'clock, they're being drunken, shouting, amplified cursing, things like that, that make for being a bad neighbor, have you had those experiences?
You know what? I can't say that I've, I've heard that. You know, maybe I'm a heavy sleeper. Um, but, you know, as far as anything like trash in the alley or anything like that, we have a lot of homeless that come down the alley, and they do go through our trashcans. And, um, the Greek Orthodox Church that is right close to there, which their part of the alley is more where the Deckers are, there's a lot of homeless debris. And even today, I, I walked over by where Dr. Lou's office is, and there's like a, a big, um, there was a shopping cart filled with just junk. And I know that there's a young man that's purchased that building and is doing, you know, cleanup and everything there. As far as the, the liquor bottles, things like that, I can't say that I've personally witnessed that. The only thing, you know, is just the, the music in the evening and, um, but like I said, if they, if they finish by, you know, the amount of time that the city says, but see, I'm a person, I'm up at three-thirty, four o'clock in the morning, and so, it's not unusual for me to be asleep by eight or nine o'clock. So, I can't tell you specifically that they went until midnight. I don't think so, but there again, you know, if Mr. Decker has been over there and he, you know, it's on his watch and they're still going at it, you know, I, I can't, um, I can't say that he is not telling the truth.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Just Judy's done.
Any other commissioners like to ask questions or make comments? I keep seeing, Commissioner Rudnick keeps reaching for the button. Did you want to speak? Because I haven't seen your name pop up yet.
I do, but I guess it's not working.
Okay, but we'll, we'll, we'll recognize, uh, Commissioner...
Okay, so, my question's for, uh, Director Johnson. Are, are these applicants, are they in compliance with their CUP? I mean, bottom line is, are they in compliance?
Not as of yet. They're working towards it.
So, they're not in compliance?
That is correct.
And as part of their CUP, they are not allowed to operate their business unless they complete their requirements? Am I understanding that correctly?
You are understanding that correctly.
So, they've been in violation of the requirements of the CUP?
That's correct.
Okay. And, okay, and the excuse has been, they had ongoing business, they had to continue, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Am I understanding what, what the applicant's reasoning has been? Am I missing something? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Uh, the applicant stated their portion. I, I prefer not to summarize her comments.
Okay. But they are not in compliance with their CUP?
That is correct.
Okay. And the, the code, excuse me, zoning for their property allows the use, right? I mean, I'm being basic here. I'm just kind of going through my mental checklist.
The CO zone at the time of application allowed for a banquet venue to be considered under a conditional use permit.
Okay.
The zoning ordinance has changed where that is no longer a use that is permitted or conditionally permitted in that zone.
So, they're trying to be grandfathered in, in a sense?
That would be correct.
Okay. And the neighboring properties, how are they zoned? Are they zoned residential? I'm sorry if I'm asking obvious things, but I'm just trying to understand a little bit more.
No, you can see the site there. So, primarily, you have C1, which is a neighborhood commercial, and you have the CO zone, which is the professional administrative office, and then you have some R3 zone, a little bit further away, which gets into residential.
So, it's kind of a mixed bag, if you will, of zoning and uses and things. So, what they're doing with this event center is not entirely out of the realm of possibility for this kind of mixed-use area? Am I saying that properly?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the main issue is they are not in compliance with their CUP?
And they're asking for ex, an extension of time to come into compliance so they can operate, yes.
Okay. So, my question now, thank you. So, my question now is for the applicant. Can I, can you come down a little bit? Just to give you some background, most of us up here are involved in small businesses, so we understand the difficulties of operating one, and it's a, it's a challenge, okay? So, we're not trying to be difficult with you, but we have to look at lots of things when we make decisions up here. Why are you not complying with your CUP?
Okay, I want to be clear. The only thing I have complied except for the bathroom, there was a long list of compliances, and they've been done. There was a list for this, for the planning department side, and there was a list of compliances for the building department side.
Okay.
The planning department side was, was completely approved, signed off, the same day I got my building permit. So, that side of it was completely done. That was already completed. And then I got my building permit. So, the only thing that hasn't been done is the building of my bathroom.
Okay, I kind of, I kind of get this. But where I'm having a difficulty is you're running your business, right? We agree? Am I misunderstanding? You're having events and things that you're...
Not, not right now. And I, I was going to get to the March event, but we got stopped during that part of it.
But you're planning on something in the near future? You've got some...
I am planning, yes.
Okay. But you're not in compliance with your CUP?
Not until the bathroom is done.
Okay.
And that's what the extension of time is for.
Okay.
Just the bathroom.
So, how soon is your bathroom going to be done in relation to when your next event is going to be?
The, I, my next event is scheduled in March, and so I'm hoping to be done by March.
Okay. I, I have an issue with you not conforming to the items of your CUP. Your neighbors have a legitimate concern here.
Okay, can I, can I just point out something, please? Because it's important. In my meeting at March, in March, and I have notes that can confirm what I'm about to say, that when we spoke with everybody in the meeting, including Mr. Johnson and the city attorney, they were present, and, uh, another staff member, Ms. Jackson, I have her notes right here. We specifically asked the entire meeting, the staff committee, can, if we could finish all of our compliances, we get a building permit, and we get it permitted in hand, can we commence while under construction? The answer was yes.
Wait, stop. Commence meaning can you have parties and...
Yes, can we, can we operate business?
And, and the city told you that it was okay?
Yes. And I have notes that Ms. Jackson has written them down.
Hang, hang on. Director Johnson, does that sound correct? Or is she misunderstanding, or am I misunderstanding? Was she given a kind of a pass for a little bit? I mean, what's, tell me what's going on?
Not to my knowledge. No, she was not, nor do I recall a statement saying that she could, uh, operate with privies or portable bodies.
Well, Mr. Fick told me that.
Mr. Who?
Mark Fick.
Fick?
Was in the meeting. He stated it. It's also noted by Ms. Jackson that that was the conversation.
Okay.
She also wrote that down and provided those notes for the report. Um, Dave Paquette, I believe his name is, the code enforcement officer, he also stated that he remembered the conversation. Um, and so, it was important, even in the, even in the notes that you can read, we even said, we surrender, we're done. We, we, we will not be able to move forward with this.
Okay.
Unless we can operate.
I understand. So, where, where I'm trying to understand, we all have to be regulated, whether we like it or not.
Right.
Right? You know, it's a part of the function of things. If you are performing your business in disregard, whether intentional or unintentional, of your CUP, that's a, that's not a good thing. And that's not something we can condone or work with unless you are given explicit affirmation you can do that. And I would advise you to get it in writing next time, because that's going to give you a lot...
Advise me to, what? I'm sorry.
To get that affirmation in writing.
It, I have it right here.
That, that you're allowed to operate without meeting the conditions of your CUP?
Absolutely. It was a meeting that we had and discussion, and Mrs., Ms. Jackson wrote it down in the notes, and I have those notes. She, she supplied them.
Hang, hang on. Director Johnson, does that sound correct? I mean, it's contradictory to what you're saying, so I'm trying to understand things.
Ms...
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Ms. Jackson is a staff member. Uh, she is not, she did not dictate the meeting. These were just her personal notes. She did note that, uh, Assistant Building Director Mark Fick, um, there was a discussion on that. I did contact Mark Fick to ask if he recalls what it was, and he said that he told or instructed Ms. Huff that if she were to submit a letter to the building director justifying everything, the building director would review it and provide a response in writing whether or not they could use privies. As of this afternoon, a letter was not submitted to the building director.
Okay, so they haven't complied, hang on. They haven't complied with your request from them to get additional permission to have advance? Am I saying that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so you're not in compliance according to our director? Okay. So, I, I'm having an issue with it. It not, you're not a bad person or anything. I'm just trying to understand the particulars, but none of us up here can operate our businesses without being in compliance with the rules and regulations that govern us. It's just the way things are.
I understand.
So, I, I, I mean, I, I would like...
The letter that he's...
Hang on, hang on. I would like the applicant to have an opportunity to fix her problem, but I, I, I mean, I think, I'm speaking for the commission, is that she should not be violating her CUP, which is, she should not be operating her business without meeting the conditions. And if she does, then I think her CUP should be denied because she's, you know, not doing what she's supposed to do. So, I, I, unless there's something I'm missing, that's why I keep asking a bunch of questions.
Well, let's, let's be clear on what we're here for today. What we're here for today is just to address the request for extension of time to meet the compliance. And I understand what you're saying.
Well, but it's tied together, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, let's, but we, we don't, we can't have anything to say about whether the conditional use permit gets revoked or not revoked, so...
Okay, well, but if us not allowing her to have time because she's been not complying, it ties into it. I understand what you're saying. We don't have that authority, but we do have the other authority.
All right.
So, you know, my thoughts are that you cannot operate your business unless you're in compliance with the CUP. I don't personally have a problem with giving her some time, but she has to comply, and if she doesn't comply, then I think the CUP should be changed. And that's why I'm asking a question, because I'm trying to understand, is there, you know, what happened? Why are you doing it? It seems like you're rebelling against the system, and we can't operate our city in chaos.
Okay, well, I, I, I'm not, though. In March, I ceased all events in March, after we met March seventeenth, and in the notes that you will see, every single event, there was zero. I started working toward getting my plan. It cost eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to get my plan engineered, all of that, okay? Got it done. But we have to go back to this meeting, because this meeting, they said, get it in hand, get all your compliances done. I did that. Get your permit, and when you get your permit, you can operate while you're under construction, because Mark said, anybody who's under construction uses portable restrooms. They had the conversation in there. I, I'm, I'm, I, I don't understand why Mr. Johnson doesn't remember this, because it's also in the notes. And because it was very important to us...
I'm sorry, you know, I'm going to interrupt you now, because we're really, we're in a circle here at this point. Uh, do you have a letter from the city saying that you can override the conditions of the CUP?
Excuse me?
Do you have a letter from the city saying that you can override the requirements of the conditional use permit?
No, we had a meeting to discuss all of those things, and I have the notes of the meeting.
That question's been answered now, so, so thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I, I think I have the facts. If, if there's something I'm missing, please tell me.
Well, I, I, yeah, because I, I, when, in March, I stopped all events, so we can finish complying. I wasn't just doing events during that time.
But you have to continue stopping all your events until your CUP conditions have been met.
Uh, no, until I received my building permit, and then I could operate while I have my building permit. That was the agreement. And now that, they're retracting that agreement, so...
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
It seems as if I'm disregarding the CUP, and I'm not.
Please let me ask some questions. So, Director Johnson, am I misunderstanding? Please enlighten me here. Is she allowed to have events without meeting the conditions of her CUP? Is there some type of temporary situation? What, what is she operating under?
She needs to be operating under a conditional use permit, but that conditional use permit is not commenced yet, because she hasn't complied with conditions.
With the bathroom.
So, she is...
She's not allowed to operate? Am I saying that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, she operates, she's in violation of her CUP until she's met the conditions of her CUP?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, I have nothing going on. I'm just trying to get the extension of time so I can build it.
I just, I want to make things crystal clear to myself and to yourself, that you are in a very gray area, that the current codes don't allow, and tell me if I'm wrong, the current codes don't allow you to do what you're doing if you don't cooperate with the CUP conditions. Am I saying that right, Director Johnson?
You are correct.
Okay. So, okay, so I understand, and I think you understand the seriousness of what you're doing. Okay? We're all kind of tuned in here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rudnick. Commissioner Kater.
Sorry for interrupting. Just for edification of the other commissioners, the planning meeting notes from the mentioned March seventeenth, 2020 meeting can be the, is the last attachment in our agenda, so you can look at that. There is a reference to, um, Mark, who I assume is Mark Fick, mentioning that with proper documentation, what do you, I'm just going to read it, but I lost it for a moment. He said, present a letter saying, we put a deposit on a prefab bathroom and allow privies in the meantime until finished in, in November. It is how the notes read, and based on the fact that none of the commissioners were at that meeting, that's the best that we have to reference what was stated at that meeting. So, um, I, we're asking questions and giving opinions, right? asking questions and giving opinions, right? Because we've closed the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I just want to acknowledge to the commission that I think we're in a unfortunate situation in that we're reviewing a business that had operated for a year and a half before realizing that they were out of compliance and were suddenly sent down every small business's worst nightmare of realizing what they had invested in, what they had done was not done properly. And then they are trying, have tried to dig themselves out of it. So I, again, I think Commissioner Coleman, what you stated, I'd like to echo that in that we are looking at an extension of time, whether this applicant can have a little bit more time to finish the compliance. Now, it is very, very concerning that, that events seem to have commenced or have been going on during this process. But again, what we're looking at is an extension of time. I would ask Mr. Johnson, it sounds like there's been a lot of communication between your staff and the applicant over the last two years of this CUP. Would you say that's correct?
More than what's typical with other developers under a conditional use permit.
And the, then there was a number of conditions exceeding just the restrooms. Is that what I understand? And those were all clearly documented that they had been met. They were inspected. Staff was notified those, that work had been done?
Correct.
So, and I mean, I think we also, looking at the masks around the room, you know, we're also experiencing kind of an unforeseen year of businesses that have been turned upside down, you know, and industries, events, you know, that they're definitely not included. And so I think, to me, I feel like it's understandable that by far the most financially committed improvement would be one of the last the applicant would seek. If I were in their position, I could see myself, I could see myself saving the most expensive thing for last as well. And I think it's understandable that financing is probably not the easiest thing right now. So I would just, just for my edification, I have a question for planning staff. What does, how is the CUP revoked and what does that look like? Because I, I do understand and I, to my, best of my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, that is not something that's on the table for us tonight. We are looking at extension of time or no extension of time. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. You kind of had a two-part question.
Yeah, sorry. I do that a lot. My apologies. Yeah.
If, if you deny the extension in time, in essence, you're really kind of revoking the permit. But a formal revocation would be, is if we start receiving complaints, we would come back to your planning commission. We would advise you as such under staff communication. And then we would ask for direction on whether or not your commission wants to move forward with revocation. If you decide to move forward with revocation, that would be a, a public notice and it would be put on the agenda for a public hearing item.
Yeah, because I would just say that, I mean, I think it's, it's a complicated, convoluted issue. To me, I think systemically as a city, we should look at how an event venue with a very large social media, public presence was able to operate without the right permits for a year and a half before it was identified that that was happening in the heart of our city. And, 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 but I think now that we're all in this, trying to figure it out, I do think, I appreciate the neighbors, residents coming out in support and opposition. I think I, I am not, this is, this is on my walk to work. I am not within these, the immediate neighborhood of this neighborhood, but I, I have been by this applicant's business many times and appreciate, you know, both this venue and the Junior League and the ability for successful outdoor venues to co-mingle with historic neighborhoods. I think that we as a city look at how we can creatively use our city center. And I think, you know, at times it takes, you know, good projects and creativity to, and I, and I would say, you know, the private sector to really invest in their vision. And I just, having walked by it every day for the last three years, I, I think it's, it's done a lot for that neighborhood. And I appreciate Dr. Vonnat's, or did I get that right? Did I miss? Bonet, sorry. My apologies. Acknowledgement that as a neighbor, you know, it is not, as, as someone who lives directly across the alley, it has not caused undue harm. And so, yeah, I would just try to encourage the commissioners to contextualize what we're looking to do. We have an applicant that has one item remaining who's asking for a little bit more time to achieve the item. I do think, given that there is no mistaking that the applicant is out of compliance, that that extension of time is to complete the remaining item and not to host events. And so I don't know if that, I think in the staff report, you had mentioned the opportunity to include language that stated, actually, I'll defer to the city attorney about, you know, appropriate language to verify this extension of time is for the completion of the CUP process and that no events are to be held until the items are complete.
Yes, that is correct. Chair, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kater. Secretary, if you could pull up the, the options again, because I know that there were some variations on what you could do today. So like you mentioned, we could, we can include the, the fact that no events occur during the time of the, during the extension of time. And then you can also approve it with the extension as the time is required, or you could do a lesser, a lesser amount if, if you would like.
Okay. I, I think I'll defer back to the chair to see if any other commissioners have comments before I make a motion, but otherwise I'd be happy to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Kater. Commissioner Lomas.
I have a couple of questions, I guess, for staff. The letter that's referred to in the notes, was that received? The letter stating that a deposit was made on a, on the bathroom construction?
And again, in my conversations with Mr. Fick, who said that that information needs to be submitted for consideration, in which case the building director would reply in writing, that submittal was not received. No.
Okay. Are there any other conditions besides the bathroom that have not been met right now?
I'm going to default a little to the Paul Archer with the Building Department, but in essence, it's just the, the bathrooms. They have a permit for the bathrooms, but there are also some ADA items that need to be corrected and those are part of the bathroom permit. So, so yes, it's, it's just one item, one permit, but there are a couple of items rolled into that.
Okay. Thank you. I also want to just make note that there was a, a letter, actually two correspondences from Chris Finberg, a neighbor, that was complaining about the noise and the problems that, that he was dealing with. So I wanted to just make that one note. This one's tough. And I'm going to just save those comments for myself. The only way that I would be open to an extension of time would be a lesser duration to get them moving and with the extra language. Otherwise, I would vote to deny.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. Commissioner Rudnick asked to speak again prior to you.
Okay. So my question for the applicant is, how long do you think it will take for you to finish your bathroom and be in compliance with your CUP?
I talked to my contractor today and he's just ready for me to tell him to start. He told me from start to completion, from start to completion, it should be 90 days, no longer than 90 days.
That seems like a long time, but I, you know, things happen. I understand. So you're requesting 90-day extension to complete the bathroom. Am I understanding that?
Yes, I already have my financing set ready to go. My contractor.
So it's, it's 90 days is what you're asking?
Yes.
So if we gave you 100, figuring things happen, and I understand how that works, that should be ample time to meet the elements of your CUP. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wade.
Just a couple final comments from me. As a small business owner myself, I'm in a, I'm in a heavily regulated industry myself and I've been to bureaucratic hell. I know what it's like to not even understand you're out of compliance about something that, well, not necessarily in this case, but in other times when it shouldn't even have to be done in the first place, but you have to jump through these hoops and then, you know, it starts affecting your livelihood. I get it. And my natural inclination is to try to promote business in Bakersfield and try to, well, under the, the law of, of, and what we're allowed to do here, but to encourage particularly downtown. So I like what you're doing and I understand that it's hard to even know what you don't know. The thing that makes it particularly tough is that in addition to all these problems, you have neighbors that are particularly mad at you in this circumstance. And it, what makes it hard is that they're saying you're a bad actor. And that's on top of the city saying, ah, they've been a bad actor. So there's a, there's a push and pull for me on this because I'm pro what you're doing. I'm all about it. But if I'm, if I'm in Mr. and Mrs. Decker's shoes, I'm wondering, okay, so they build a bathroom. That, that doesn't fix all the complaints that we have. This still hurts our quality of life because the city isn't properly enforcing the permit. Then again, that's not what we're here to answer, is how well the city is enforcing the permit. We, we, we aren't the people that get, that go out there with flashlights and, and magnifying glasses and determine whether you're in violation. That's not the question that we're here to answer. So I'm torn on this. I feel for the, the Deckers and I'm not happy with some of the violations, but I would probably be in favor of a limited approval, although reluctantly.
Commissioner Kater.
The one thing I would recommend, the applicant has been given a, a 90-day construction timeline. I would recommend that we lengthen that a little bit, given the current pandemic ordering and logistics and, yeah, your toilets could be backed up by six months. And so I think, you know, I would defer to the Building Department, Mr. Archer, or Archibald, or Archer, I'm sorry. Do you have a recommendation on a time?
I would, I would actually recommend doubling it because of the scope of work. This is downtown. It's not just installing a bathroom. It's actually building a new building in the downtown area. It is doing some upgrades to a ramp for the existing house, which is a, not just constructing a concrete ramp. It's, it's something that you have to make sure is aesthetic, especially based on the use. You want to make sure everything is just so. I, I would recommend a six-month extension for that fact and, and coupling it also with what Commissioner Kater said, the pandemic ordering shortages, prices on construction materials. There's a lot of, a lot of factors that come into play.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Any other commissioners like to ask questions or comment? I'll take a second to make my own comments and then we can move to some motions. You know, the applicant has said that she hasn't done any events since March, but our records are showing four events in April, another four events in September, or through September through November. The April one was April through August. There was four and there was four between September and November. You know, I, I, I think that that's well beyond the, the point where she would, didn't know that she wasn't, she was not compliant. And quite frankly, I think you've been COVID irresponsible by having events during that time. You know, the longstanding premise of our legal system is that ignorance of the law is not an excuse to violate. And so I, I think that that needs to be, that needs to be reined in. Mr. Decker, I really hope you finish your home over there. It's a really beautiful property there. I think it'll be something that'll really improve, improve the neighborhood. But like we've said here during this meeting, that we're really, we're really not here to, to punish the, the applicant. I went by there. You've done a nice job on the outside of the property. I didn't take a tour or anything, but I think that's an enhancement to that neighborhood. So personally, I, I would be in favor of some extension of time with a real clear understanding that you cannot operate your business during that period of time until you've completed all the CUD conditions. That would be my suggestion. So I'll now turn it over to commission for motions. Commissioner Kater.
I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission gives a six-month extension of time on the conditional use with adding the condition language. And city attorney, I might just make sure that this works for you.
Sure.
That, that no events as authorized by the conditional use permit shall occur on site until full compliance is achieved?
Yes, that's correct. So what I had is approve the extension of time for six months with the requirement that no events take place until all the conditions of approval are met.
Yes. Do we need a, yep. Yes, that would be my motion, if that.
Does the attorney have more comments or I see you scrambling there, so?
Yes, the Planning Director Johnson gave me some language. So no use as authorized by this permit shall be held on site prior to receiving final building division approval and the final inspection approval by the planning division. Any violation of the conditions of approval may result in revocation of the rights granted herein.
And if I may, that's on, just a recommendation and that's on the last page of your staff report?
I think that, yeah. So the six-month extension with the language stated and recommended by the Planning Director.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
All right. Mr. Rudnick, do you delete your comments? All right. So may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Rudnick. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
No.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
No.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
I have motion. Motion denied?
Can you, I'm sorry?
The motion denied?
No, I don't think so. Your recount is four to two.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bell recused.
Thank, thank, thank you. So to the applicant, yeah, your, your request for extension of time has been, has, has been granted, but with that condition is that you cannot operate your business during that period of time. So there should not be any misunderstanding going forward. Thank you for coming. Madam Clerk, may I have the next item, please?
Item number seven, workshops.
I'm sorry, did legal want to read the, how you go about appealing our decisions?
Before we get to that, Chair Coleman, I just wanted to clarify the, the vote that we had because I know that we had Commissioner Bell recuse himself. So I just wanted to make sure that the, the count was accurate.
Madam Clerk, can you read the votes, please? By name?
I did a roll call. So it was roll.
Yeah. Can you read the, by name, what the vote was?
Commissioner Coleman?
I, I can read, I can read that for you.
Please read what was voted.
No, I didn't.
I, I can read that for you. That was Commissioner Bowers, no. Commissioner Bell was recusal. Commissioner Wade was a yes. Commissioner Chair Coleman was a yes. Commissioner Rudnick was a yes. Commissioner Lomas was a no. Commissioner Kater was a yes.
Thank you.
Madam Attorney, does that satisfy you?
Yeah.
Okay. So do you want to read the appeal? The negative, the no party has left already, so?
I'll, I can read the appeal for those that are still here. Decisions of the commission are subject to an appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected. The appeal must be filed in writing within 10 days from the date of the commission's decision. The appeal must be addressed to the city council and include the defendant's interest in or relationship to the project. Identify the decision appealed and address facts and reasons why the commission's decision should not be upheld.
Thank you. Director Johnson, do you have a staff report regarding workshops?
Yes, we do. We have Steve Rodriguez who will be presenting the workshop. We're just going to change slides.
We're just going to change slides.
Larry, I can't go back once the motions, you can't, no, because it's done on the system. I can't. I do it from the computer. I roll a call from the computer and I can't go back. That's okay, that's all right.
All right, so you waiting for me to tell you to go?
I was just making sure we're clear.
I think we're ready to go, ready, set, go.
Okay, perfect. So I'm Steve Rodriguez. I'm with code enforcement. I'm one of the supervisors. I currently head up the rapid response team. So Mr. Johnson asked to come and deliver some information about rapid response to you all. In the interest of time, there's a lot of slides in the slide deck, so I'm going to kind of click through them. Some are just kind of background information and it'll allow me to get some time if there's some actual, you know, questions you guys want or feedback, very specific stuff. So once again, rapid response team, it's in development services department and we're a section within code enforcement. This just goes kind of through, we're all, we're all live here, been here a long time. This kind of goes through some background about the homeless situation, how it's increased dramatically in the past years and what the city council has done through workshops in 2017, 18, working towards prior to when the PSVS sales tax measure was passed. If you'll see, in 2019, there was a dramatic increase in the homeless population within the city. That was identified through a, a point in time count. We saw 108% increase from year to year. So the, at the bottom here, there's just kind of some information of historical data of some of the things that people believe has led to some of the situation we're in currently, some, some law changes and some folks who would normally be in prison. Some potentially believe that's some of the causes. Obviously, we have seen a much more dramatic increase in that in the past during, during the pandemic with, you know, people being released from prison and so on and so forth. And, and then just the general economic conditions. At the top, it kind of identifies some statistics of different things that are, that affect homeless individuals. Flood Ministry's outreach did a survey of some of the folks and said, why don't you go to the shelter? What are some of the reasons? They took that in information and then the city used that data to kind of address some of those situations and see what we can do to help resolve the overall situation. So first, obviously, the city acknowledged that we had that dramatic increase and we have, we had a problem and how, and how can we resolve it? And so one of them was through strengthening existing partnerships of the, the homeless center and then the, the other shelters within town that exist, that currently existed at the time. And then what, what we could do to dedicate resources to address homelessness. So, okay, so that brings us to spring of 19. The sales tax measure passed. It actually passed in November of 18, if you recall. Went into effect in April of 19. And we saw the first set of funds come in in summer of 19. So summer of 19 is when, if you'll see, we're item four on here, rapid response team launch. So, and there were some, there were some other things that went along with that that were, that were developed to that, that were presented to that committee to help address the, the overall situation. There's these seven items that were identified, like I said, were item four. So code enforcement got a team and then parks got a team dedicated towards parks. And the idea was that the general public could access us through a mobile app and really pinpoint where, where they're seeing problems within their community and help us rapidly address them. The mobile app has been around for quite some time, but we put a lot of effort into publicizing it through that year when we launched the rapid response team. But if you, if you notice on here, there are, there are a number of things that can be identified through the Bakersfield mobile app. You can report potholes, you can report street lights out, you can report a drinking fountain not working in the bathroom. And then it gives you feedbacks. That's, that's kind of the benefit. You could upload a picture, it uses a GPS pinpoint. This is kind of like the most critical thing, in my opinion, for managing that team, to get the direct feedback from the public of where they perceive the problem and then let us direct resources to where the situation is. Because obviously, we have a finite number of resources and we can only be in so many places at one time. So in my opinion, this helps us specifically focus on the needs of our constituents. So these are some stat, stats. I'm actually going to give you guys some more current ones. So in reality, there's some numbers there at the bottom. But since inception, so August of 19 till the end of last calendar year, our rapid response team, which consists of two sets of six bodies, two code enforcement officers and a small cleanup team working seven, working seven days a week, we handled nearly 6,000 calls per service, 5,809. We cleaned up 1,551 sites. And we hauled off 4,941 cubic yards of trash. So think of 40-yard roll-off, that's 400 of them, you know? And that, like I said, that's one team per day, with the exception of Wednesday where there's two teams. And then we contact, we made contact with 1,752 homeless individuals during that same timeframe. Not necessarily unique contacts, but multiple repeated contacts with individuals to try and shelter them. So this just, this, this just talks a bit about what code enforcement was and where we come from and our authority and the, the historical stuff of what code enforcement would have done prior to PSVS and rapid response. The, the stuff you were all very familiar with, the property maintenance, illegal construction, housing, signage, zoning, junk vehicles. So prior to PSVS, we have a north team and a south team and we each had an area of the city and we handled everything that happened within that area. That, that was your responsibility as the code enforcement officer of that area. You had a supervisor you report to. Post PSVS, we have those folks that still do those districts, but then we have the dedicated teams to respond to complaints within the mobile app in addition to vacant structures and such. And we clean up the trash ourselves, associated with homelessness. So it's kind of some before and after pictures. The parks team is just slightly different than us. They, they not only deal with homeless and homeless-related activities, they'll also do upgrade projects or beautification projects, like, you know, painting the bathroom or upgrading signs or streetscape repairs. And then, like I said, we focus on, on homeless individuals and the property and the, and the problems associated with that. We do work on private property as well as public property. We enforce trespass letters for private property owners. We work very closely with the PD, with arson investigators and with outreach agencies. Community prosecution team, this was one, another prong in this whole thing that would have made it successful. So from August of 19 until the pandemic started, we were making great strides. And this was, but we were only one piece of it, right? The shelter had to come online. This community prosecution team had to come into place. And so some folks are absolutely shelter-bound. Some folks have substance abuse, mental health issues, and some folks, quite frankly, needed to be in jail. That, that step never happened because of the situation we're in. I was talking with a police friend of mine at lunch the other day and like he said, currently in the county jail, there's 600 folks that have been sentenced and are, should be in a state prison, but won't go because of the pandemic and the state has no room for them. So they're still being held there, so obviously, there's no spots for anyone else. Clarification of use of city facilities. Basically, the, the city council, in addition to doing the other things they did, strengthened some language on the use of parks, so that if somebody was, you know, camping on a basketball court that should be meant for playing basketball, we could help enforce that immediately. And then shelter beds, where the, in addition to the city providing some resources to the two existing shelters in town, we also provided some funds to the, the M Street Navigation Center, the county shelter, while ours was being built. And then obviously, we built a, you know, a large-scale shelter down Brundage Lane. The Brundage Lane Shelter, last week was its 12th week of operation. There are 88 people currently housed there. So in 12 weeks, we placed 88 people, but actually, we've placed more because 10 have moved on to more permanent housing. And then there are some that just didn't make the program, which that's, that's going to happen. In addition to that, the city's dedicated resources to, or working on some of the wraparound services, making sure services are there that can provide people all those other things that are barriers to them becoming, moving on to the next step, which is permanent housing. It's supposed to be an emergency shelter, a 90-day timeframe, and then move on to something else. The housing authority, as I'm sure you guys are well aware, has purchased a couple hotels in town. They're converting them to more longer-term stays. So this kind of talks about that, about just more than a bed. The, the city spent a great deal of time visiting other shelters and towns that were successful and trying to find out what made them successful. What were the barriers that kept people from going there and tried to meet those? So the, it's the pet, the pets, the, the pets, property companion, pets, property partners. Yep. So, so basically, you could take your dog, you could take your spouse, you could take your stuff. Yep. So, so historically, you know, the men would have to go here, the women have to go there, they could go to the same shelter. And there are actually beds that are, there are areas that the, the couples can stay in the same dormitory, dogs and property. Just as other things are happening, there's different things going on right now. Clean City Initiative, the Trans-West Security Patrols, the reorganization of the Homeless Collaborative and the county and the city having direct seats on them. Okay, perfect. This is good, because slide, death by PowerPoint can be horrible. But I would like to address questions that, questions that are actually relevant, because this stuff, we could all read back through it and get all the information we wanted.
Any commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Lomas?
Maybe a stupid question, but why not? On your graffiti team, can they remove graffiti on a mailbox? A United States Postal Group mailbox?
You know, that's a good question. I might, I, my initial inkling from, I feel like, I feel like the answer is no. I feel like the answer is that that's something that the postal service has to do. But I could make sure I get a confirmed answer and pass that back through Mr. Johnson.
That would be federal jurisdiction.
Right.
The US Postal Service would have to clean it up themselves.
That tells me why the city didn't do it. Thank you.
Right, yeah, they can't do it. Because the graffiti guys are like Johnny on the spot. Like if you put that on their app and they're, they're out there and they'll.
Commissioner Kater.
I just want to give a huge shout-out to the app. It's a, it's just a great tool and a great way to communicate. You know, you see those things and you, yeah. My wife's a huge fan, so I'm meeting a celebrity tonight, so thank you so much. Yep. But thank you for that. I think it's been a great addition to the city.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we, the app is the biggest thing we push, because it like, I mean, we, we only have so many resources and it lets us know what, what really bothers you. Because I, I use it and I reported a drinking fountain that didn't work at the, at the sports park. I reported some tennis court lights somewhere and it, you know, so I, it, it tracks it, it puts it in a queue.
Commissioner Bell?
Well, listen, I want to thank you personally for the great work that you're doing with the city. I've been unfortunately on both sides of this. I have had complaints against my property and worked my tail off to figure out how to resolve it, because even in the event of the vagrancy and the homelessness, the city can't legislate that. So as far as you know, you've got a property owner that is, is non-compliant or has, but the truth is, during COVID, we've had this remarkable thing where they're, they just take over. And to your point, last Friday, I had the honor of being on a Zoom call with a, a lot of the city officials. Got to hear the city manager, got to hear the police chief, explain to us about these five or 600 that are in county jail. Because the number one question we had was, how in the world do we get these folks off the street? We knew that the navigation center was a great resource. And you know what? We don't have the perfect answer, but what you're doing is a massive bridge to fill this gap. And then I've had the honor of you all helping us on different properties where we've had real, real problems and you've figured solutions out. Thank God for us, and that continues to happen. So regardless of how it affects me negatively or positively, I thank you and I appreciate all the things you're doing. And there is an enormous amount of communication going on between the county and the city and the departments, and I congratulate you for that. Please keep it up.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And, and like I said, so I've worked in code enforcement personally for 15 years. I've, I promoted supervisor when I took over this team 18 months ago. And so it, it is really refreshing that we could actually, because we're typically just the bad guy, right? But we're in a totally different role now. We can provide resources, we can provide the help, we can, and so like three other real quick things. So we have dedicated flood teams that work with us, that are assigned to us, that can transport people to the shelter. We have, like I said, we have our, our internal capability removing trash. And then, and then as you're aware, the city's, for this, specifically this downtown area, and I think they're looking to expand it, the, the human feces removal program. So, so there's a lot of good things that all, but it all needs to come together as a whole to work.
Commissioner Kater, do you have another comment or did I just not manage my? Oh, I didn't clear it, all right. Thank you. Any other commissioners would like to ask questions? I, I would like to ask a question quickly. I think you kind of answered one of them, that the flood ministry is tied into what you're doing?
Yes, so we, we actually, when the shelter came online, we issued a contract to flood to, to hire two teams of folks and put them in a Sprinter van and work the same schedule as us. And we call and within an hour, they got to be there and they're, so they're the ones that, that, that transport folks, that, that explain the resources available. What, what's missing, what do you need? A social security card, driver's license, where do you need a ride to? And, and they'll transport to and from the shelter. And they basically provide the outreach services, you know, we, so yeah.
Thank you for answering that, because I had the exact situation happen this morning. I was downtown, nine, 9:30 or so, and I was on H Street at 17th and there was a homeless person laying on the sidewalk. It looked like she had fallen. I couldn't tell, because the rocks were disrupted. So I stopped and I tried to check on her and she was delusional and, and, I don't know, drugs or whatever. But, you know, I, I didn't know who to call. I, I tried to reach out to Jim Wheeler, but he wouldn't answer the phone. He saw it was me, so decided not to answer, but. But I, I didn't see that as an option on the, on your, on your app.
If you just pick encampment, then we'll go. But, but there's no reason that, like, always call, you could call, just call the desk line and we'll, you know, we'll send somebody over. The police can refer people over or, or flood directly.
All right. The other thing I wanted to ask you about was property owners who allow their properties to become dilapidated and become places that the homeless can encamp in. And I think you and I have talked about one property on 20th Street that we continue to have problems with, you know, the homeless getting in there and then they set it on fire.
Yes.
And it's set on fire multiple times. Are we any closer to being able to sanction these homeowners other than sending them a bill for our work?
So the city has the ability to, to issue admin sites, but the admin sites have limitations too, as far as how many can be active at a time and how much. So the, I would say currently, there's not really.
Chair Coman, the topic of vacant buildings has been in discussions for the past, I want to say maybe year, and it's been, it's been in committee for the past year. And we've been going back to committee to give updates as to how we're going to proceed and what we can do. So at this point, I believe it's Legend Lit, am I correct? Legend, yes, Legend Lit. So at this point, it's, it's on hold. It will be discussed in the next few months. I believe we have a meeting either in February or March and it potentially will be, will be discussed further and whether the council will entertain an ordinance. It, it's a possibility, but it's still on the table.
All right, thank you.
From our standpoint, like, our best method is the combination of us and continue, and that other half of our team that still does the traditional code enforcement with the fines and the fees and so on and so forth, and to, to, to push, to pursue both avenues always at the same time. If it's a, if it's one of those properties, which we're aware of all of them within the city, that doesn't have as much property owner assistance, if you will, that we pursue both simultaneously. Like, we'll go and deal with immediate issues, but we're. we pursue both simultaneously, like, we'll go and deal with immediate issues, but we're also pushing through our administrative process to make sure that they're going to be held responsible financially, and for cost of warrants and cleanups and such also.
All right, the last question I had was, in 2019, Caltrans got sued in San Francisco for disposing of homeless persons' personal belongings, and it was kind of an affront, because it was a, I don't know, $700,000 judgment against them by the court, of which about 300 of that went to the attorneys on either side, so very little of that money actually got down to the homeless, that's another whole nother matter, so, I, I didn't mean to get on that, on that track, but the, the question for you is, you know, what are we doing to protect ourselves from judgments, and maybe it's not you, maybe it's, the city attorney needs to answer that question, but I would like to know what we're doing in that regard.
So, all of our processes, and our policy procedure manual has been reviewed by the city attorney's office, we, we, we separate items of apparent value, and we protect them for 30 days, and then we hold a destruction hearing, and then dispose of them. So all, all, everything seized that has value, or is, you know, bedding, or clothing, or what, that's not just straight trash, is, is stored, or, or, or there's a hearing held prior to being seized, so either it's found property and stored, or a hearing is held and seized pursuant to the hearing, and we follow timelines that are established or within practice throughout the state.
Yes, and we provide due process to the individual, to allow them to come pick up their, their materials, and if they don't, then we dispose of them, but yes, we're well aware of those cases, and, and we're, we're following the, the law, in terms of not destroying, just going by and picking up their, their things and destroying them.
And we're, we're finding ways to communicate with them that, you know, are beyond the traditional mail, because they don't have addresses, they don't have email addresses, they don't always come from...
We physically post it.
Physically post the area where they, they're located.
Great, thank you, that's, that's all of my questions. I think, does that, do you have any more, any more comments, anything to add? All right, thank you very much for coming here this evening, and staying so late, and sharing what you guys are doing, I think I can speak for the whole commission, that we really appreciate what you guys are doing out there on a daily basis, that whole rapid response thing is, is a great idea, the app's a great idea, I, I hope more people use it, so thank you.
Absolutely, and you'll, you'll see more enhancements of it throughout this coming year, through, through a couple new initiatives, and it's, it's only getting better from here.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item eight, communications.
Director Johnson, do we have any communications?
Just to be advised, we will have a meeting February 4th.
You make us earn our $25, huh?
You wanted the conditional use permits.
Hey, careful what you ask for, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item nine, commission comments.
Do any commissioners have any comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I think it brings us to the next item.
Item 10, commissioners, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Let me bang the gavel, there you go, yeah.